Welcome to the October 4th School Committee Meeting. And we're all just getting situated, a little bit of a late start here, so thank you all for tuning in, and thank you for allowing us a few moments to find our seats. We'll start with open public comment, and on the way in, I checked the list, there was no one listed for open public comment today. So we will move to approval of minutes. I think we have the June 28th minutes for us to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 28th, 2022 School Committee Meeting.
Sarah and-
Second.
Second from Rob. Any further comments on the June 28th minutes? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor? For all vote for the minutes. Thank you. And Brent, thank you. Welcome. Sorry for the rush in, it just happened. Traffic is traffic, right?
Yes, and holes in roofs are holes in roofs.
Oh, wow.
For the record, I was in favor of closing the hole in the roof.
If you want to, we got the third item, you want to kick it, Dr. Berdows, for the teaching and learning highlight?
Thank you, Dr. Berdows.
I'd like to ask Amy Muldowney to come up to our guest table. As Amy's walking up, she is in the position of Community Wellness Coordinator, and having her here as our teaching and learning highlight this evening, I think, is a great opportunity for those that are listening at home in the community to hear about what her role is. It is a grant-funded position, a grant that Corey Michaelazek was able to write, and in partnership with Brigham through a health initiative. The purpose of this particular position is to really create and then sustain partnerships within the community, and community-based agencies really specifically, and to be there to support students and to support families and to be that liaison with our counselors through our schools. There's going to be opportunities to increase access for services for families and students, and instead of me going through and listing off a lot of these different roles and responsibilities that Amy's going to help facilitate, I'll just turn it over to Amy so she can share with you what she is going to be doing as our Community Wellness Coordinator, and we're so thrilled to be able to have this position to support our families.
So, as Dr. Berdows was saying, the main goal of this position is to really make sure that we're connecting our families all across the community, but particularly those families that are in the Foxborough Public Schools, with the resources that we know folks really need at this moment. But we also know that that looks different for different families and different situations. One of the things that's really exciting as a result of this grant and other pieces that have been put into place is that we'll soon have a partnership with Interface through William James College. And what that's going to allow us to do is provide that contact information for anyone in the Foxborough community so that they can reach out to William James College and be connected with mental health resources that are in our community, and also have folks from there follow up with them, see about the goodness of fit, whether things were successful or not. So that's something that we're going to be able to provide to everyone in the community. In addition to that, the role that I have also is to think about, along with our mental health teams and school staff, who are the folks that we know, who are the families we know that are in more of a need? Whether it's because of the intensity of the situation that they're in, or are there other obstacles that are making it harder for them to access services? And how can someone in my position as sort of that family liaison help them? Maybe it's directly making the phone calls for some families, maybe it's coaching people in other situations about how they can access those services. But what we really want to ensure is that people are getting what they need. Secondary to that is this idea of, you know, there used to be something that we called the warm handoff, where we would know who the providers were in the area, and we could say, you know, who would be a great fit for you and your family at this moment? And provide that contact information and make contact with that person so that they had an idea of what was happening for this family. Over the last two and a half years, that's really become impossible. Because all of our providers have been inundated, all of our families have been really overwhelmed as well. So one piece that we'd like to do is reconnect with our area providers as well, find out who's still practicing in the area, how are they practicing? Who are the clients that they're best equipped to serve? So that way, rather than folks getting a whole long sheet and saying, "Try these numbers and see what you get," we're able to say, "Why don't you give a call to these first two people, that they seem like they'd be the best fit for your family?" And ideally, we're going to recreate those relationships with the providers that we have so that way they can be confident that our referrals are the right fit for their practice as well. In addition to sort of those pieces, we're also working on parent education pieces. Our goal is to have workshops each month for parents. And again, this position allows us an opportunity to be really flexible in what we're providing and how we're providing it. Our first event will be next Wednesday night at Foxborough High School, 6:30 PM. Anybody in the community is welcome, and it's going to be an organization called Minding Your Mind. They'll be here to speak with us about adolescent mental health. We'll have a clinician as well as a young adult who has lived experiences with mental health challenges as an adolescent. These were folks that we were able to have in for our PD days at the beginning of the school year for mental health staff, so I'm absolutely certain that it's going to be inspiring and informative for anybody who attends. From there, we already have our November event scheduled. We'll be doing something with the McLean School Consultation Group, and that's going to be a lunch and learn, because again, we really want to try and remove barriers for folks. October's going to be an evening event. November's going to be a virtual event in the middle of the day so that hopefully we're pulling across different folks. The McLean presentation will have to do with depression in youth, but we're going to talk not just about the symptoms of depression in older youth, but also sort of those protective factors that younger families can put in place to protect their children in the future from those symptoms. As we're moving through the school year, we'll be reaching out to the stakeholders in the community, so parents, even students, especially our middle and high school students, and finding out from them, like, what are the things that you really want us to be targeting within your parents? What are the things that you want to learn about? How can we support you? That proactive lens. Additionally, it's been really wonderful to be here in Foxborough and have an opportunity to be a part of all of the other programming that's related to social-emotional learning and mental health that's happening here in Foxborough. I'm alternately astonished and unsurprised at how much is happening, and all of the people who, it's no surprise in Foxborough, have really stepped up and taken leadership roles and are just getting things done for families, whether it's the Pannarana surveying that we're doing to get those social-emotional learning competency information from our students, or that we're piloting second step Tier One SEL instruction for students, or simply those mental health teams that meet nearly every week and are really targeting how we can support those families in the building and outside of the building. So this is a really great place to be, and I'm very excited to be a part of this work this year.
Any more comments from members of the committee?
I would just say, everything that you just said sounds fantastic, and I'm so excited about this program. I know how important this really is. And having that warm handoff is essential to, when families are in crisis, to be able to know that the person you're reaching out to is there to accept the call and to connect. That's really fantastic. So I'm very excited to have you and have this program, so thank you.
Others?
No, I'd just second that. Really excited that you're here, thank you so much. And thank you again to Corey for taking, or Mr. Michaelazek, sorry, for taking the lead on getting that grant for this position, so we're very fortunate.
Absolutely.
Can you mention the night next week, that that's the Family Health Night, right? Can you mention that again so that maybe if people didn't hear that in your presentation? I think it's important, it's been on our calendar for a while, so I was thinking about it. So if you could mention that again.
Absolutely. So next Wednesday night, October 12th, 6:30 PM, at Foxborough High School Auditorium, we'll have Minding Your Mind, and they'll be doing a presentation about adolescent mental health. Two speakers, a clinical expert who's excellent, and then also a young adult who has lived experience with mental health challenges. And both of them are very powerful speakers. That information is on the school calendar, and going forward, all of our events will be on the school calendar as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
How did, how did you find out about the position?
So I am a returner to Foxborough. I was a school adjustment counselor at the Burl and the Taylor a number of years ago. And then within, I've had a lot of great experience being able to work in other districts around SEL and mental health. But once this position became available, once it was posted, I knew that this was the place that I wanted to be. So I'm very grateful to be back.
Nice.
We're very happy to have her back.
I know.
Absolutely.
Love when people return.
Absolutely.
Good for us, we build the bullpen and everything. They keep coming back, I like that.
I do too.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
So I think that, you know, what you heard was navigating, it's really hard to navigate these complex agencies for families. So having the many years of experience that Amy has from being in a school adjustment counselor, in addition to professional development she's provided in other districts, she actually came and provided professional development in our summer institute. I attended that and was reminded of all of the strategies and tools that are very hands-on for teachers to be able to go and to apply and to think about those competencies, when we talk about the Castle Competencies with social-emotional learning, when we're thinking about decision-making and self-awareness and self-management and all of those things. Just making it very real. But the other piece, and just hearing about the October and the November parent pieces, is we really want to be able to provide parent resources for them to draw upon. This Minding Your Mind, when she mentioned that we had that as a professional development session in August with our staff, I was able to attend part of that session. And even just for the half of the session that I was there, was able to then apply in other situations what I was able to learn in a very short amount of time. So I think it will be a great presentation for parents, and they will walk away with some, as I say, their nugget, with something that's going to help them in any facet of their family and their life.
Ms. Muldowney, as you look at, just, are there other analogs? Are there analogs in other towns and districts that you're aware of? If and where this work gets done in other communities, who's doing it? And what do you know about who's doing it?
So we have, we have grant funds through the Brigham, and then we also have grant funds through DESI, and that's enabling us to be parts, be a part of community of practice. So this morning, I had a two-hour Zoom with all different districts across the Commonwealth who are grant guarantors too, they have the money as well. So we got to talk about all of the different ways that people are doing this work within their districts, how the obstacles that people might be coming that are common for all of us, and then also the successes that we're sharing too. So this is a really exciting time to do this work, right? Because I think that we're drawing attention to it, we're seeing the need for it. And if nothing else, my optimism is that hopefully we'll come up with a disruption that's going to push us forward for students, right? And optimize those mental health and SEL needs. And do it as a community, whether it's here in Foxborough or across Massachusetts.
Nice. So as I'm hearing correctly, the cohort that you were linking with is this grant-funded cohort of folks who are, through DESI, who are joining in the same type of work?
Yes.
Lovely. And to your knowledge, were there any districts that were addressing this need in any similar manner prior?
Prior to the-
The grant, yeah.
Definitely, people have been doing different things. I've been lucky to work in some districts around here. I was part of the Sharon Public Schools for a number of years, and we worked really hard on our Tier One instruction. Funds are always something that pushes an agenda on things, so I think having the, whether it's the SRF funds or these funds that are directly dedicated to social-emotional learning and mental health are definitely pushing that piece, aside from just the awareness, right? That we started to see inside everybody else's homes and hit those pressure points over the time of this pandemic. So there's definitely folks who've been doing this work, and there's been that, they call it sort of the systematic mental health system within a school. But there's a lot of folks that we're sort of all on a similar plane.
Nice. Well, I'll be hopeful and curious to hear the analysis you have for the admin team as the year goes on and for the cohort, because one of the broader discussions that we've had as a committee with Dr. Berdows, Dr. Burrows and Mr. Yukna here is which of these things that are good for kids and families do we continue doing once grant funding transitions to other people's responsibility? And so it's just part of the broader discussion. Any other comments or questions from the committee or admin? Thank you so much, Ms. Muldowney, for being here. Lovely to meet you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Welcome back.
Yeah, and welcome back.
I was never fired.
Next up on the agenda, we have Dr. Berdows with the superintendent update.
All right, so I will start with enrollment. I had mentioned our September enrollment, but the official enrollment, which is the October 1st, our state reporting, you have that. I think I had mentioned too that we would see some enrollment start to shift with our preschoolers. We have, we're 17 students of an increase since our last meeting, and that's 15 of them are preschoolers. And then we had two additional at the IGO, so-
Wasn't that two weeks ago?
That was just two weeks ago, right?
Yes.
And that's not surprising? Or is that, that's, okay, it's just because as fall draws near, plans tighten up?
Well, it's testing. Some of it's-
Oh, sure, intake.
The intake that way, and some of it is, you know, the peer group that are coming as well.
Okay.
As well as age, isn't it? They just have to be of age.
Oh, that's right.
So a number of factors that go in. But we'll, we'll continue to see our preschool-
That's right, you projected that, that's right. And that's, that's typical, you're saying.
So one of the other updates that I wanted to mention, which is really exciting, is that we're going to have for the first time a unified basketball team at the high school. And they actually had their first practice yesterday. And that is, basketball team, they will be competing for their first time next week. So unified sports are an opportunity to be able to be more inclusive and to provide an opportunity for pairing athletes. We have that in track, for a unified track team, and so being able to pair our athletes with those that, without intellectual difficulties, disabilities, I should say, on the same team. And so they're going to be part of the Hockamock League, and during the month of October, they'll be playing a schedule, and that tournament, they'll have a basketball tournament that will take place in Taunton on October 11th. And just really want to give a shout out and a thanks to Mrs. Galanti and Mr. Griffin and Mr. Struble and Mrs. Petty, who are going to be the basketball coaches, and basketball coach along with Mr. Gibbs. So really exciting that they're going to be able to do something that's really important.
That's great.
We have no school on Friday, Professional Development Day, just as a reminder, and then Monday, the holiday, so that's just a reminder there. One of the things that I wanted to also bring up, you've heard that this is our year for the Collaborative Conference for NIASC, and as part of that, we'll have a two-day site visit, and that's taking place on October 17th and 18th. And as, that's the two-step process. They come in, they look at our self-assessment, and then they'll come back about 18 months later for their decennial visit and give recommendations, and that's part of our accreditation that takes place every 10 years. But one of the pieces that will take place is with Central Office. We have a particular timeframe where the visiting team meets with us, and I wanted to invite any school committee members, if you wanted, if you're available and want to join us during that time. There will be an opportunity, Mr. Donovan had sent it out for high school families, if they wanted to participate in any focus groups. But for school committee to participate, you would be participating in the meeting with us, with Central Office, which is myself, Bill, Stephanie. And that time is on October 18th at 11 o'clock AM. It's 11 to 11:40, and it's going to take place at the high school. So if you're able to join, and you can even get back to me, you know, later on and let me know, but I just wanted to extend that invitation. Two other updates that I had at our last minute, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, just clarify, they come with a site visit and meet with really everybody, right? And then do they, do they issue a preliminary report after that?
Yes.
Okay, and then it's the 18 months?
Yes.
And then the final?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then you'll be part of, when they come back for the final piece and an interview piece as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Which is why they only do it every 10 years.
Yeah.
At our last meeting, we spoke about, Mr. Yukna actually talked about the Audit Committee Liaison, and, Mr. Chair, I believe you've had someone who's come forward that is a willing participant, which we are very excited about that, Bernard Dumont. And in your materials there, you have his resume, just to get a little bit of background. And we would need to have that at a school committee meeting, like on the 18th, as an action item, to be able to appoint the liaison that wanted to provide that information. And then, I don't know, Brent, if you had anything else that you wanted to add?
My, my addition is, just by way of experience, that I've worked in terms of volunteer work in town with Mr. Dumont for about four years, when he was a member of the Advisory Committee. He chaired that committee, and he really did a deep dive into the town's finances and did a lot of frankly, education work with the AdCom at that time for folks who wanted kind of finance 101. And so he was able to see the big picture, able to really drill down on some of the big priority items and explain that to people. Anyway, so I was just very impressed with him and delighted that he is looking to get involved in this capacity. So that's just my option, two cents. And I don't know if anybody else in the committee has, I think a few others maybe have worked with him as well.
I agree with all of that too. I think he's done some great work for the town and-
Yeah.
Great perspective, great understanding, very strong financial background. It's very obvious, so.
Right. And I think as he's moved into retirement now, he's looking to, you know, make more public service a part of his day, so I couldn't be happier.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Fair enough. And in the meantime, if folks have questions, please forward them on to anybody.
And then the only, the last update that I had was looking forward to bringing something back pre-COVID, which was the parent leader meetings that took place with, it was like four times a year on a Tuesday morning. And parent leaders are anyone that's been in a leadership role within our PTOs, our PAC. And what those meetings consist of are providing things that are topics that they're interested in learning more about, so they can take it back to their PTO and their PAC meetings. And then in addition to that, alternating and having a couple of evenings during the year, which were the community evenings, and those I've held at the past at the Boydham Library. So confirming dates for those, but look forward to sending those out in the next few days. And we'll explain what that is, but to have those back as part of our typical school year. So it's just an opportunity for the community, the community evening coffees, if you will. There's not any agenda item, it's more of an informal meet and greet, but come with questions, and then if there's questions that arise, being able to provide information there. The parent leaders are those that have served currently or in the past as leaders, in leadership roles in any of our wonderful organizations that support the school so much.
Questions on that? Thank you for taking the time, and everybody on your team is going to work on that. It's lovely to see that coming back. All right, do any committee members have any follow-up? Questions, comments, or anything related to the superintendent's update? With that, let's move on to the elementary school improvement plans. I believe we have some guests here. Thank you all so much for coming. And would you like to introduce?
I would love to.
Thank you.
So at our last meeting, we had our action plans for the Plan for Success, and I spoke at that point in time that the school improvement plans, as they should be aligned to your district improvement plan, which is our Plan for Success. They have been working over the past, you know, end of, last half of last year. We've got some new leadership at the Taylor, I mean, not at the Taylor, at the Burl and at the IGO. Sorry, Mike. You still feel new, that's true. You're only two years in there. And so what you're going to hear from the three of them tonight is the work that they've done with their school councils and looking at how it aligns with our district plan. So there's a lot of commonality, which is what we hope to see between three elementary schools, because you want the experience as we're feeding into the same middle school. And so I will turn it over to them. So Mike Stanton at the Taylor Elementary School, and then Robert Worth at the Burl, and Danielle Morrissey at the IGO.
So, just a quick introduction, Mike Stanton, principal at the Taylor School. It's my third year at the Taylor in 10 years in Foxborough.
Robert Worth, I'm the principal of the Burl School, and this is my first year in Foxborough.
Danielle Morrissey, principal at IGO, my first year as well.
So as Dr. Berdows said before you, you have each of our school improvement plans. They are unique based on our individual profiles and strengths and needs and opportunities for growth. But we're very proud of trying to find what we can share in the vision and the workload that we have. We have a lot of common goals, and being three elementary schools, we want those guaranteed experiences for our students. And if we find that something's going well in one part of town, we share that with the others. There's no shortage of initiatives, and we're excited for that work. And as you have heard over the past few months, a lot of these phrases and topics are familiar to you. And our goal was to take what Dr. Berdows, Dr. Burrows and the administrative team has done with the District Success Plan and to translate that down to the school level. We'd like to begin just by recognizing and thanking our respective school councils. You will see their names on the packets for each of the school improvement plans. We have teacher representatives, parents and community members. We'd also like to just take a moment to thank our Director of Student Services, Corey Michaelazek, our two directors of curriculum, Noel Hendrickson and Karen McKinnon, for their efforts and contributions as well. So tonight, what we thought we'd do would be best is just to be able to break up the pillars and share highlights, even though one of us will talk about a pillar. All three schools are represented, and we did have a couple of individual ones. If there's questions at any time, please feel free to let us know.
Thank you.
I'll second what Mike said about us being a really cohesive team. We were able to spend some time this summer at the Harvard SEL Institute. And, you know, in the short amount of time that we've known each other, we've developed a really great professional relationship, and we've really enjoyed, I'll speak for everybody, we've really enjoyed working with each other, and I really enjoy working with them every day. Just have some pictures of our schools.
We do like the Burl sign, we will admit that.
We know.
It's not in the improvement plan, but we do like it.
It's a good graphic.
It jumps out, the Amish shot over there.
We'll get there.
I can't take credit, I did not take that picture. So I'll begin just by speaking about Pillar One. So Pillar One, lining with the district strategic objective to provide a safe, secure, supportive, responsive and innovative learning environment for all students and staff. In order to meet this objective, we have the following initiatives. Our first initiative is to conduct a safety audit of our schools and facilities and grounds. This will be done on an ongoing basis with the assistance of the Foxborough Police, the Fire Department, as well as the Buildings and Grounds Teams. We are all deeply committed to building and maintaining very strong relationships. I know that, you know, Mr. Stanton has built those relationships over time, and Ms. Morrissey and myself both come from districts where we previously had excellent relationships with our public municipalities. So we're looking to kind of build those relationships as the year goes on, and we've already worked on that. Already this year, we've attended trainings with the police and fire departments. We've worked together to begin the completion of our annual safety drills and had conversations with those departments afterwards to analyze how they went and where there's room for improvement. And we, there's actually a picture here. Last Friday at Burl, we had our Hi-Fi Friday. It just really highlights our strong relationship with the police and the police presence as a proactive community policing initiative in our schools. I really appreciate that relationship. I know that staff, students and families also really appreciate that relationship. We're very fortunate to have such a committed police-fire departments in town. We are currently collaborating with outside consultants, Synergy 911, to conduct a safety and threat assessment of our school. We are exploring opportunities for innovative learning spaces and resources. And an example of this is looking into opportunities for outdoor learning environments in all three of our schools, looking for more innovative learning environments. With the renovation of the Burl, we were able to incorporate this into the building. So if you walk through the school, you may recognize some areas in the school where there's new furniture and kind of pull-out spaces for different groups in the hallways. And finally, install communication boards on the playgrounds, which is something that we were really excited about, we got to do at the beginning of this year. And I want to give a special thank you to Mr. Corey Michaelazek for his assistance in planning and making sure that this initiative was followed through. I'll pause there.
Can we ask questions?
Sure, of course.
I'm at a loss, I'm a high school guy, so I don't know what a communication board is. Is it, is it a high school thing, or is it an elementary thing?
Elementary, elementary.
I really don't know what a communication board is. Do you know what one is? Does anyone else? Okay, it's just me.
I apologize, so I can explain that.
Yeah, please.
So the communication board was installed at all of our playgrounds at the beginning of this year. It recognizes the importance of communication for all of our students, but especially those who may have complex communication needs. So all of our schools have student populations who have complex communication needs. This communication board has symbols, pictures and letters on it that allow students who may not otherwise be able to- be able to communicate with staff and other students to now be able to do so. Additionally, it also is accessible to our general population of students and also anyone who visits our schools after, after the school hours. So we're very excited to add these. They will help everybody in the school community just be able to communicate better and be able to enjoy play at recess.
And one thing that Mr. Michael Azic and Pam Barlini, who is a speech pathologist at the IGO School, they're going to create a QR code and a video link. So people who visit on the weekends and use it, or staff members, they can just understand and watch that video and have a quick tutorial about how to use it and its purpose.
Oh, what a great idea. That's a great idea. Wow.
There's a picture of it.
Well, I see it. I just can't tell. I, yeah, I just, I had no idea.
I appreciate your question. I did not explain that.
Thank you.
Is that something that is used widely in other schools? Or is that something that has really just come about recently?
I would say it's come about recently. The school that I was at last year, we had just installed one last year, actually about a year ago. And it was amazing. I mean, the response was overwhelmingly positive. It was, like I said, it was something that was accessible to all of our students. And it was used by all of our students and families when they came to visit the playground on evenings and weekends as well. So pillar two, in alignment with our strategic objective for the district, providing opportunities for educators to collaborate and create common equitable learning experiences. Some of the initiatives that will help us meet this objective are continuing to develop and strengthen our multi-tiered system of support, MTSS model. This framework allows us to support students by recognizing their individual academic and behavioral needs. And we're currently working with the DESI MTSS Academy to support and train staff about this important initiative. So although we are at different parts in the training program, all three schools, including the Hearn at this point, are now part of that academy. So it's very exciting. We have been working this year to complete and implement the recommendations from the ELA Curriculum Review completed last year. And the two highlights here that we've been able to begin to implement are expansion of our ELA blocks daily from 90 to now 120 minutes in every classroom every day, the ELA instruction, and our new ELA Curriculum Empowering Writers that we've been working to implement and train staff with. We will continue professional development in the math curriculum for existing staff and introduction and capacity building for all of our new staff members. And lastly, strengthen student success teams, SST, and professional learning communities. This is meeting the structure that is built into our schedules at all grade levels, and it's an essential component of the MTSS model that follows our work in that regard.
And then remind me, because this is going back a number of months, how are students referred to or come up in the SST, in the student success teams? Is that faculty brought, or is there, yeah?
Yeah, so it's a combination of, you know, daily observations from the teacher and then looking at some of our screenings or assessments that go on. And then the teachers will look at whether it's literacy, mathematics, socio-emotional, or it could be something related to a sensory diet or speech. And then we invite the necessary team players to join those meetings. So what's been exciting at the elementary level, we tested it last year, we were able to put across all three schools this year, is that professional learning community. In the past, we would secure subs, and we would schedule a day to have the teachers gather. More often than not, someone else was out of the building, we had to pull the substitute, so those meetings never happened. So at all three schools, we've been able to build time in the morning that our specialists, our art, music, wellness, and Spanish teachers cover. They greet the students at 8:45. They go to a classroom. They take attendance. They do morning meeting. And then that's their first period, their class that they have at the beginning of the day. So those classroom teachers and special educators can then meet with the principals, service providers. And we're able to talk about students, something that hasn't existed before the previous eight years. So it's been a great opportunity to talk about students in real time and not look at some of the assessments and wait. It's a much more proactive approach as well, looking at students and giving them what they need in the moment. And that's something I think that we'll see throughout this plan, is that it's driven around students' needs, but also realizing that, you know, we need to, as principals, our job is to remove barriers. We need to remove barriers for students, for our staff, and also for families. And sort of having that part. So that student support team is really, and sometimes people, I think, often think it's a child that might be struggling. Our goal is for everybody to grow. So sometimes it's for a teacher, they might come for a student that they need to accelerate their learning or provide some opportunities, some extensions. And that gives us a chance, if I'm the teacher, Danielle or Robert might have some great ideas I hadn't thought about. So it's really a collaborative process to take student achievements to the next level.
Ideally, how frequently?
We meet once a cycle. Each team meets once a cycle for 45 minutes.
And as he just said, it's proactive, too, which is a huge step for student support teams. It's so, it's so challenging in the busy schedule of a school to always be reacting to situations, but to actually have that planned time and put your heads together when observation is an important piece of that. You observe something, you're thinking this, you believe this. You get the team together to proact. And so I thought that was really a great point to make, and I think it's important for people to hear.
And I would say the dividends that we're seeing from our inclusion in the academy, the MTSS Academy, we're using our universal design. We're asking teachers and staff to anticipate those barriers and think about different learning styles before, instead of just responding. And it's been exciting. It's been exciting to talk about practices, best practices, to look at accommodations, to look at resources. And as principals, once again, what are the tools that we need to give to our students and to our teachers and families?
That's great. I'm really heartened that you're able to build that into the regular, the regular cycle. That's not easy, and it takes a huge commitment. So thank you for all committing the time to that.
And we saved money, too.
Bill just danced a little bit.
I know, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so for pillar three, we have, our strategic objective is to provide the necessary supports to ensure healthy minds and healthy bodies for all members of the school community. And some of the initiatives we have are implementing the Panorama lessons in tiered support. So last year was the first year of a three-year rollout with Panorama as our SEL Universal Screener. Our counselors work together to explore the program, and they supported teachers with the administration of the surveys. This year, in addition to implementing the surveys, teachers and counselors will look at the student data and utilize the student playbook feature, which will allow lessons to be tailored to students' specific needs. We're also going to utilize MTSS to address SEL and the physical well-being of students. We have a new program, you might have heard Mrs. Maldoni talk about it, Second Step, which is a social competency program. It's a tier-one program, and we're going to use the resources to support student well-being. In addition, in addition to the social competency program, it also has an anti-bullying component, which our school counselors will be implementing when they do guidance lessons at all grade levels. And lastly, we hope to expand our resources to support adult well-being. And we all went, attended the Harvard SEL Institute this summer, where we learned some strategies and ideas and suggestions on how to focus on the well-being of not only our students, but our adult staff as well. So we're hoping to pull some of those resources and come up with ways to support our faculty this year as well.
Related to the, how frequent is the Panorama assessment screener?
It's given three times a year.
Three times a year. We did twice last year, and this year we'll be doing three.
Oh, wow. Okay.
We spent some time also kind of digging into that data as a team as well, across all three schools, just being kind of mindful of how we're looking at the data, how we can use it in the future. And then, you know, just discussing common trends that we've seen throughout the three schools. So that, it was great to be able to have that time to compare.
Now, at the elementary level, one difference is starting in third grade, the students take it up through high school. But K to two, it's Teacher Perception Survey.
Sure.
And so that's just a little bit different. And the conversations, you know, are a little bit different because it's their observations and what they see as opposed to directly hearing from the student. So it's exciting. It gives us, you know, snapshots, and it's giving our counselors the opportunity to go in. You know, we've been able to add some resources, Second Step, anti-bullying curriculum as well. So we're excited that, once again, when we look at that MTSS, that multi-tiered system, we're truly putting that in place.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Please, Dr. Burdo.
Just another piece that connects to that, and you'll be hearing with the presentation at the next school committee meeting on our K-12 Insight, Culture, and Climate Survey. So if you recall, we had added two sections for that. And it looks at the social-emotional learning, the five competency areas, and parents, students, in grades, middle school and high school. And then faculty and staff answered that. So it gives us an opportunity to triangulate the perception on what's taking place in different areas. And that's an important piece when we're thinking about how do they see themselves and, you know, making good decisions, or managing themselves, or, you know, just awareness and, you know, being empathetic and those kinds of traits as well.
Can I ask about the check-in, check-out? So that was, it's not there, but it's in our thing. So I don't know what that is actually either.
So it's got to be a program that we are going to implement at IGO. And so it's called CHICO Check-In/Check-Out. And it's a system of support for students who need more than tier-one support. And what it does is it gives an opportunity for students to have touch points and contact with adults who may not be their classroom teachers. It may be their kindergarten teacher, if they're in fourth grade, that they had a loving, great relationship with. And it's just an opportunity for them to check in, like, hey, have a great day. What are you going to work on today? If there's something, an area that they might be struggling with. And just kind of being an extra cheerleader for a student who may not be in your class. I've done it in Newton in the past, and we had our custodial staff involved. We had, you know, central office involved. We had many people involved just to kind of be extra touchpoints for our students who may be struggling in certain areas throughout the day.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our final pillar is diversity, equity, inclusion. And the strategic objective is to foster and strengthen the respect and action of staff, students, and families to celebrate diversity, ensure equity, and practice universal inclusion. Our goal is to provide all of our students, staff members, and families the opportunity, and I know we've used this phrase in the past with, you know, mirrors and windows, that they can see themselves in the curriculum, but also in our school. And they feel valued, they feel safe. But also, looking out the window, they can see others. And they, and we introduce them to a world beyond maybe something that they were used to. So for the diversity, equity, inclusion, a big piece of what we'll be doing at our three schools will be dictated and influenced by the district committee for that, and being able to sort of see the work that's done there and how it translates. We are, across our schools, interested in understanding what we can do to improve this area for our families. So we'll be creating some surveys, and we'll be sending those home in addition to the district survey, just so we can understand and hear some voices, maybe that we don't always hear. We also are excited to do some learning walks, but through a different prism, for, to be able to have some stakeholders. And we were even talking about this earlier today, you know, not necessarily people from our community, but maybe our school councils go to the other schools as well.
Yeah.
And to be able to take a look at our respective schools from a different point of view. And do the walls represent our students, our faculty, our families? And it's something that we're striving to do as we become more diverse in Foxborough and at each of our schools. It's something that we just don't want to accept our diversity. We want to celebrate it. It brings so much joy, and it brings so much opportunity within the curriculum, to have students be able to shine, to have families come in. I think that's probably one of the biggest things that we've missed due to COVID, is the family participation in person. And so we're getting that back this year, and it's been wonderful across our three schools. And also looking at some community events as well. We have the World Night at the High School, which is fantastic. But at the elementary level, sometimes that's a little late for some of our students who have earlier bedtimes. So is there some things that we can do within our school communities that can celebrate and bring our families closer together, and our staff?
And our last slide is just our why. This is why we do it, right? We're all working hard to make sure that the students across all three elementary schools in Foxborough have an equitable, enjoyable, fun, and safe teaching and learning experience. So we wanted to make sure that we ended with pictures of our kiddos, because this is why we're all doing the work that we do.
Were there any questions that you have, whether what we talked about, or what might be in our, any of our plans?
For one, I'll just, I want to thank you for hitting this at both levels. You're obviously in education. You should consider going pro. I think it's good. No, but like this, the slides are great overview, but then in our, the level of detail in the, within the plans with the, each of the four pillars.
Yes.
With each of the strands and your targets and your measures is incredibly clear, very easy to follow. And I mentioned it, you know, a few weeks ago with the Plan for Success, it's, you know, inextricably intertwined with the district's broader goals. But it's also clearly unique to where each of you are in your school. So I really appreciate the thought that went into this and tailoring it to where each of the schools is at and where you all are at as individual building leaders.
Thank you.
Any other comments or thoughts from members of the committee?
I was just going to say, I appreciate how it's all intertwined together. So we have a small community, but we have three different elementary schools in all of the town, and they're all feeding the same place. So we are the same community, but even if you do walks and share your buildings, that's valuable. So I just think it's valuable how it's all intertwined, how it's all linked to our district goals as well. So I don't know if people appreciate that enough, that that's the beauty of a system. It's the beauty of the work that you've done together with three separate leadership and three separate school councils and things like that, that's just feeding one. So I think that's very valuable. I'm not assuming that other towns don't have that, but I'll be proud of what we have. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hundred percent. This team makes me smile. All three of you make me smile. I love the group pictures. I love the selfies. It seems, you seem very cohesive, and I feel like our students are benefiting from that. So thank you.
I would just like to encourage anybody that is watching or that chooses to get the agenda in the meeting minutes, do take a look at the specific plans for each of the schools, because they are.
Robust.
They are very detailed. And this is a great presentation, is an overview, but the plans are really well put together. So I appreciate that. I'm certainly amazed that you, the two of you have come in in such a short period of time, been able to gain such traction, and highly appreciative of your intentions to do that and your ability to be successful with that. My personal take on this is, if I could convince my wife, she's not watching, to have another child, so that I could get them back into one of the elementary schools, I would love to do that, because you guys are really inspiring as a team. So thank you.
That's extreme.
I regret saying that out loud. I'm blushing. So Paul, you heard that. Can we edit that out, please, Paul?
I'm not going to say that. Not about the elementary schools. Schools are good.
Schools are great.
I'll have my middle schooler come see you.
I just wanted to ask something that mirror everything that everyone has said, but one of the things that I thought was really kind of interesting, and just looking at kind of the overviews of the school improvement plan, was that each of them have, you know, the list of school council members on it. And I thought maybe it might be helpful for parents and community members that are listening at home to understand what the role of the school council members do. And just kind of give a little bit of an overview of that, if you don't mind.
Great question. Thank you.
So I would say, you know, for, it's trying to find that balanced approach, where we have equal representation of teachers, parents, and a community member. And each stakeholder of this school council, of each of our school councils, brings a unique perspective. I always, I know for my parents, like, you know, what are you hearing at the soccer field? What are you hearing at the bus stop? You know, what's not showing up in a survey that you're completing? I think for the community representatives, they're able to give us some rich knowledge beyond and have a different eye. And when they hear something, they're not in it, and they're able to sort of ask questions and share some contributions. But I think the wonderful part of it is truly, the foundation is to take our schools to new heights and new levels. And so each person has that role. And something that we all share, it's equal voice around that table. This, you know, we're just one of the members. It's not our school council, it's the Taylor School Council, or the IGO, the Borough. And trying to be able to have that part. So, you know, it's been exciting to sort of have those stakeholders and the different representatives be able to sort of reach out to their constituencies who they represent. We give updates at our PTO meetings, the school improvement plans once approved. You know, we do post those on the website. So there's a link to that. So families can be connected in the community at large. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
I think that's one of the most important pieces to me. So the school council serves as kind of a body that looks at the school council, develops it. it, you know, develops accountability measures for its implementation. But one of the best parts of this year has been sitting down with the school council, going through this plan, piece by piece, and having one of the members of the school council at Borough, who is a teacher and been a part of that council for a long time, say that this, this was the first time that she really understood, from a macro level, exactly what was happening at the school. I think that's a really big piece of it. So I think the school council was really responsible in that way for bringing that information through the school improvement plan to the community, to the community, you know, the whole community and not just the school community. But for the teachers at the Borough, I think this is a great way for them to understand from a macro level what's happening at the Borough School and all the great things that are happening. And that is kind of like an unwritten, it's a big responsibility of the school council. It's something that I think they enjoy doing. We're very lucky.
I'm appreciative that you have broad, you know, across many different stakeholder groups, broad and very substantive involvement, because this is, you know, this, this is the action plan. And I love that, I also love that it goes out to the public and that it's posted there.
We use the Culture and Climate Surveys, you know, I think some people, do we look at those? Yes, we go through every single question, we look at every single response, we compare years, we look at our MCAS data, we look at just, but we try not to have that one source of data, you know, we have the qualitative and quantitative balance and being able to sort of see what we can do. And then there's other things too that come to us that align with the district and we need to be responsive to that. I can tell you that probably all three of our schools, this probably could have been 50 pages long. We have so many things going on, but, you know, that old saying is less is more, and really prioritizing what we sort of feel the watershed actions that we can take that will have a larger impact and then we can continue next year with some of the work.
That's great.
We answered the question.
I think you did, you did answer the question and I just thought it was really interesting to kind of look at it because I hadn't quite seen it in quite this way of like, you know, here's the school, here's the school council members, you know, it's made up very clearly of teachers, parents, community. And that's really, I think, important for people to recognize is that, you know, there's definitely opportunities for parents to get involved in their schools, the larger community, and the direction of where things go. And that's great. That's great to kind of see that involvement with administration and all of that. So, thank you.
And I think with Dr. Berdows, shifting to this model, which was different, the Plan for Success and having us follow that, has given that clarity. It's nice to have that document, but if people don't read it or understand it, so that's been, it's been a great benefit to hear, hear that feedback.
Well, I hope.
Thank you.
It seems just from what we have present that there's still within, structure sometimes can, can, I guess, stamp out individualism and creativity, but I'm not seeing that in this plan. And I want you all to keep working as a team, but you all know that your schools are different and, and I'm happy and delighted to see that there are some nuance to this. And as, as Mr. Worth and Ms. Morrissey, you know, come into their full year here, just keep your notebook going with things you'd like to see, and I know Mr. Stanton always does that, so just keep wishing and dreaming and, and where you want to see things happen for your individual building, we look forward to seeing them filter through plans like this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I just end with, this is October's National Principals.
It is.
Dr. Burroughs actually reminded me of that earlier. So thank you for everything you do.
Yes.
And the pictures, I have to agree with the, at the beginning, Sarah, I mean, just to see the cohesiveness.
Yes.
And from my seat, it's, it's real. So they're just, it's just so exciting to see your team working together. So, and thank you for all you do, particularly in the month of October with National Principals.
I didn't know that existed.
Every month. Every year.
Thank you very much.
November, we won't care.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. So moving on, our next item is a municipal school services agreement. Mr. You, or Dr. Berdows, would you like to introduce?
I'll take it. So basically, as you know, every year we have to do a report into the state, which details our expenditures, our revenues, not just our budget money, but money we receive from grants, revolving accounts, and things of that nature, and how we spend it. Part of that is also that not, and Foxborough is not uncommon, but in most districts it's true, that not all funds or all expenditures that benefit the schools are sitting within our budget. Perfect example is health insurance, is that's a single budget line on the town side that covers all employees. So for the state to get a true picture of what it really is costing to run the school district, part of our end-of-year reporting is that we take information from the town side, whether it's for the finance department, you know, like I said, insurances, and insurance is not just in health, but buildings and our vehicles and things of that nature. The administrative costs for, and actual working costs for different departments, DPW, who does all of our grounds work, so our snow plowing, you know, things of that nature. Granted, they're not direct expenses in the education process, but they are a direct expense in operating the school district. So, so that we've been doing forever, it's called Schedule 19, that's produced as part of our end-of-year report. There, the state came up with a requirement that basically the school committee as well as the Board of Selectmen agree in the principle of how those calculations are done. So, you know, what we put together basically is what we've been doing for at least the 10 or 11 years I've been here, but I know it was done before and actually it was a work where Randy, you know, sat down with us and basically designed out the costs. So something like snow and ice, you know, most of that money is spent on the town roads and stuff like that, but they do have to come in and plow our driveways. So that has a minor cost of about 5%. But there are other areas, like the Tree and Park, which basically does all of our fields, all of our buildings, mowing and, you know, all that type of stuff, we have a higher percentage against, which is based on how much land there is in the town that they're taking care of. So I think we've done a fairly good job on the methodology. This is just formalizing it. The Board of Selectmen have already reviewed it and approved it. On their side, they agree that the allocations look appropriate. And again, as I said, this has been what's been used for at least the last 11 years, maybe more, as far as how we've done the calculations. It does not change what we directly spend on education and it does not change the, you know, what taxpayers are putting towards the education budget. It is just an allocation of the town sign expenses for us to operate. If there was no town side, no police, no fire, nothing else, we would need those additional costs just to run our, our schools. So I think that's the way to look at it. And again, it's strictly, it's a, it's a requirement of the state that as part of the end-of-year report, that this agreement be in place going forward. It was always kind of a, you know, unwritten type of concept, although our spreadsheet that came out, the Schedule 19 that we worked between the two of us, actually had exactly how we were calculating it. So that's why it wasn't too hard to create the document, because we knew exactly what we were doing. But if there's any questions on it or thoughts.
Mine's just an artifact, and I guess, I guess this is history. How was the, if you know, how was the 8.3% kind of arrived at, I guess, in terms of the allocation? On, it's the Schedule A expenses, like the school percent, I think we say across the board, 8.3%. Is that just kind of fair parsing of the pie between the town and the other departments?
Yeah, I mean, it was basically, again, looking at what each department does and looking at what they're doing for us versus the other departments. So across the board, when we looked at every single one of those, we had to kind of come up with a concept of how much we felt was directly related to us.
Sure.
So, and again, they're looking at it based on, you know, like if you're looking at the DPW administrative side of the crew, they are, again, responsible for plowing, you know, grounds work, you know, even to some degree, some paving and stuff like that. They do so many different things for us. So their management has to, in their process of planning every year, has to plan for how much time they're going to put and allocate towards us to do things. And again, we are obviously the 800-pound gorilla, I guess, in the room when it comes to requirements, because we are the most, we own the most property, we own the most, you know, square footage of building space, we, you know, we have all that. So as part of the town, there are requirements to help us.
Fair enough.
So each line, each detailed item in there was taken based on what they do in total and then how much of it, you know, appears to be to us.
There it is. Any questions or follow-up comments from committee members? All right, with that, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the municipal school services agreement as presented this evening.
I'd like to second.
All in favor? That's 500. Can we get this signed tonight?
If you could sign, yeah, if all five of you could sign it, all five.
That'll be coming down. And then, with leave, I actually skipped something I was going to say with, on the school improvement plans, Dr. Berdows. I, in my utter excitement to get to the municipal school services agreement, which I look forward to every year, I forgot to have us vote on approval of the elementary school action plan. Now, if committee members are comfortable, I'd entertain a motion going forward. If folks prefer to wait till the next meeting, I also understand that.
Fine.
My question is, do we vote on each school improvement plan individually or?
Well, it's elementary school improvement, so I think it's across the board.
We could choose to do either, I'm, I understand. So we could choose to vote them as, as a package, all three plans as presented. If there was a specific piece of information in a specific plan that you were, that any member was wanting to see, you could then vote on two or vote to hold and then pass questions on through Dr. Berdows, who could then get more information for the committee.
I don't think that that's necessary.
Okay.
But I was just wondering.
No, no, it's a good question.
From a procedural standpoint.
No, it's a good question. But in the past, we've been able to accept them as a package if that's the will of the committee.
Okay.
I think we're in agreement at that. I think, yeah, I would move we accept all three elementary school improvement plans as presented this evening.
I second.
Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
That's 500. Thank you and apologies to committee and Dr. Berdows for skipping that. Moving on to other matters, I'll, in a flourish of regular uncreativity, I'll just go down the line like I always do. Mr. Canfield, do you have any other matters?
I do not.
I do.
So Donnie, would you like me to come back to you?
You know what, no, I always do.
I know you do.
I am just looking, I have two things today. First one is just a blanket reminder about the MIIA rewards, the insurance rewards. Babs Kelly in, is retiring, but I believe her predecessor is on maternity leave, so she is still the point person. If anyone has any questions or would like to reach out to do a webinar, I've done a few. Fiscal year ends in May, but it was a little bit of a scramble towards the end last year, so I just want to give a gentle reminder. I just took one this week, that it's there. And we have a really fun, first of all, I mention this every month, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'm really proud of our students. We, the Parks and Rec have done sort of like a program with the National Honor Society and the students just continue time and time again to overwhelm us with their generosity of volunteerism and how they step up. This Friday, the Rec is going to be running a day-long program during the Professional Development Day for working parents, and it's completely staffed by National Honor Society volunteers. So hats off to the parents out there and the teachers and the high school and the National Honor Society, because it's just been, it's exceeded, you know, the Rec's wildest expectations and really proud of our students. So that's just my own two cents. But we are having some really fun activities coming up again. They're on, we've got wonderful volunteers from the high school stepping up to help staff these. The newest one is the uncommon pumpkin patch. Last year we did the pumpkin float, we don't have enough water to do that this year in the frog pond. So you'll see little, little jack-o'-lanterns all over town with, you know, battery-operated lights and that's all just, you know, a wonderful community effort. So, and our students play a big part in that, so I just wanted to put it out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. For my part, for other matters, all I have is a thank you to all faculty and staff and administration who were at all the parent nights. I had a good opportunity to take in one at the Hearn and the high school and parents are just, it's just delighting, delighted to see parents walking around, talking to teachers and just being able to see the spaces that their kids go through, because sometimes they don't share all the details of their day. But it's just, it was lovely to interact with the administration, all the teachers, and just the families. And it was also just nice, families were genuinely enjoying talking to each other in a school setting too. So I just want to say thank you everybody for that. That was a lot of work that everybody put in, everybody put in to get those off the ground, so thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Nothing.
Ms. Raymond?
Nothing.
Dr. Berdows?
No.
Dr. Burroughs?
I would just echo what was said earlier about our elementary principals. They really collaborate so well together. They're a fantastic team, it's been wonderful working with them. They have been fast friends in just a short amount of time this school year, and they are really working closely to bring that Plan for Success to our students and really follow through on our MTSS work, on our PLC work. It's just, it's a fantastic team, parents are really lucky. Elementary-age parents are really lucky to have such a collaborative team.
All right, well, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just avoiding that. Just a reminder, Wednesday night, 6:30 at the high school.
Thank you.
Minding the mind.
Minding the mind.
Next Wednesday.
Yes, the 12th.
The 12th, yes.
Sorry, thank you, yes.
Minding your mind.
Minding your mind, so important. Sorry about that, Brian.
No, you're fine.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor? 500, we stand in adjournment.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for watching.